I gotta remember not to take these home with me this time.
Yes, please don't.
It's okay Gwen, don't mind coming out to get them.
Yeah.
We're gonna get started with the pledge allegiance. Okay, um, just real quick, we do follow an agenda. Uh, there is copies up here if anybody needs one. Uh, real quick, uh, show of hands, are, is most of the folks here to discuss the Coons Lake situation? Sir, okay, so it's, it's not on the agenda, but we have, we've kind of discussed it up here. We are gonna take some public comment on that. So you folks will get an opportunity to talk. We'll try to stay on schedule, uh, so hopefully that'll start about five twenty. Uh, Rachel. There we go.
First is bid opening for the culvert project, small structure project on three fifty east. I only received a bid.
Okay. That was one bit here. It looks like it's from Reeve Riley. County road three fifty over Cedar Lake ditch. Is sealed. Okay. It's like the. On the itemized proposal, the base bid. It's three hundred and eleven thousand. Six hundred and forty-nine dollars even. And that's three one one six four nine. From Reef Rally Construction Company. I don't know.
If you'd like, you can table to your next meeting and I'll talk to the consultant about make sure everything in the bid packet is correct. No, I didn't get any locals.
Oh.
Will we table what you rebid or?
Yeah, that's gonna be what I ask. Can we put it out for bid again since we only got one? You'd have to reject the bids first to do that.
They bid again before we reject them. Cause I thought we weren't going to pull it to. Concrete call. Did what they did it like?
It, this is just, so the culvert itself that we're doing comes already put together. And it's eighty thousand dollars. So this is just doing the work of the installation, not even, not even for the culvert itself. It's just the work for installing it.
I'd like to. Take one too, or take more bid power we got.
Well, I think we, we either got it rejected or table it. Does that matter?
Reject, take more bids.
So, yeah, if you wanna take more bids, you'll need to reject by vote.
That's what I want to do.
Let's see, if you table it, sorry Mike, if you table it and ask for more bids, we're technically violating the terms of our original bid offering.
Mm-hmm. Now they just. Airing it out. Picking the new call down and not in there. And picture.
Who's here from Reece Riley? Your structure reinforced concrete box section. So did you guys actually bid the comfort, the culvert itself too?
Yeah, yeah, it's the, the, just the box structure. Itself, the twelve by six.
So they actually were, were getting the structure. They're just doing the construction, but they actually bid the culvert itself.
I have the box in there. I didn't realize you guys had the box.
Yeah, we have.
Oh, doing something different.
Thirty-seven thousand dollars.
So we should probably reject it then.
Yeah.
And have them resubmit.
Without the structure itself in there.
Mm-hmm. We're gonna get the. Governor to say, okay, sorry about that, no problem.
So if we reject, fill it out for bid and they can have an opportunity to re-vote with that. Yes, result, yeah. I'm gonna get moved. I'll second it.
All favor.
All right. Both of us here. Uh, Rhonda?
Hey, uh, we have a grant opportunity through the state of Indiana. Um, it's called referred to as the seed grant. It is to bring the addressing and create a center line for, um. A format that will be nationally recognized. And the state of Indiana is supplying a grant to the counties to do this. I haven't told you and we haven't yet. So, um, we've prepared a proposal and this is again fully funded. The county doesn't have to come up with any money at all. Uh, we along the, the process of the grants, um, we submit invoice to the county. The county sends that to the state, the state sends the county money that they send it to us. So nothing has to be funded on that. There is a. Uh, uh, let's see, my going has the packet with these. There is a disclaimer that. If the grant would not be awarded, which hasn't happened yet.
Alright.
Here, I'm sorry.
Not play Justin got a top two.
That's all that was in. The Michaeling, the one with the blue writing is the original that I'll need for this thing.
Okay.
I thought it was copy on ours.
This is the one that only signing.
Okay, so. I guess for the sake of the public and maybe for us too, can you step us through a little bit more? What we're talking about here?
Okay, it's creating a center line within the GIS system, um, for the roads.
Okay.
And also to put the addresses, the county will still, everyone else will still see the addressing the same. It's a behind the scenes converting the addresses that will go into this national database.
Okay.
But nobody have changed their addresses or not.
No, no, it's nothing. It's, it's a behind the scenes computer kind of that generated.
And this will be a hundred percent funded by the state?
Yes.
Okay.
Nobody doesn't have to come up with anything. It was up to thirty thousand, but, uh, our company analyzed the data and didn't leave that much at this point.
Okay.
I will be okay. I like Justin to read it, maybe make a motion that we go forward with it along with Justin. Okay, once he gets chance to look through it.
Justin, would you like? Some time?
You just give me a few minutes. There's not a lot to it, but.
Okay.
I'll be here to the end if you wanna.
Sure.
I know Becca has to leave.
We still have a little bit, I'm good.
I've looked at these before. I just know, man, it doesn't differ from what I've seen before, so.
Okay, well, we're still on track here, so we're, we're good on time. If you wanna take a few minutes. Okay. It's all right with you, Dan?
I'm sorry, it's gone.
Okay, so this is the one that would need to get first.
So you said we can cancel within a hundred and eighty days if the grant is not approved.
It'll automatically, it won't take effect if the grain isn't approved, but. We've had. Twenty-nine so far been approved, so. And we do do all the paperwork for this, so, um, we'll complete all the paperwork and then, uh, I explained to Becca, I just had, would have to log on with her and to submit it through the state port.
It's got the language in there. Pose only goes into effect on notification of a warrants or a global warrant, I'm sorry. So. I'll have a little choose.
Okay, just real quick, is that an eight-page document?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure he was looking at the same thing. Okay, so.
One go with it.
Alright, second. All those in favor?
I.
I.
Thank you.
Alright, so where do you want our signatures on this? Here and here?
Yes. Please, thank you. And Rhonda, will you make sure I get a signed copy?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Thanks. Alright. Patrick?
Matt, the late, I wanna. Present you guys with. Um, last one that I wrote, and I'd like to speak off the top of my head, said, uh. I'm writing this as a concerned citizen regarding a matter of growing urgency in public interest at Coons Lake, Indiana. Uh, the improper takeover and obstruction of designated public access sites and fire lanes by private landowners. That's the subject, says, uh, Coons Lake is a public body of water. And such, the designated easements and fire lanes surrounding it were established to ensure accessibility, safety, and recreational opportunities for all members of the public. These easements are not private property and their encroachment represents a direct violation of public trust and land use policy. The safety first portion says the most pressing concern is public safety. These fire lanes and access sites service critical points for emergency personnel, including firefighters, uh, rescue boats, first responders. Says if an individual is in distress on the lake, such as a boating accident, fire, or medical emergency, and these access lanes are blocked by unauthorized fencing, landscaping, or private structures, rescue efforts could be delayed or completely prevented. This put, this puts lives at unnecessary risk and could result in preventable tragedy. In addition, these lake access points are vital for the fire department in case of structure or brush fires in the area. In many rural lake communities such as Coons Lake. Uh, fire hydrant access is limited or non-existent. The fire department relate, uh, relies on. Drafting water directly from the lake through these access lanes. If these sites are blocked or made inaccessible, firefighters may lose precious minutes trying to find an alternative water source. Time that can mean the difference between contained fire, total loss of property, or life and death. Uh, this is my loss of the public use portion. In addition to safety concerns, the blocking of these public access points deprives community members of their legal right to enjoy Coots Lake. Fishing, swimming, kayaking, and simply accessing the lake for leisure are all being unfairly restricted. These fire lanes and easements were intended to give to the broader public, not just the lakefront property owners. The opportunity to enjoy the natural resource that Coons Lake provides. It says we must not allow a few individuals to treat the easements as extensions of their private yards. These sites are part of the public domain and their unlawful occupation erodes the communal nature and purpose of the lakefront. Uh, my call to action says I urge the appropriate governing bodies, including local and county officials. To investigate and document encroachments around the public easements and fire lanes around the lake. Enforce existing ordinances that protect public accesses and ensure emergency accessibility. Clearly mark and maintain these easements to prevent future encroachment. Educate property owners and the legal boundaries and purpose of these public access points. Now I'm gonna, uh, just go off the top of the head for a second. So I spoke with the Coons Lake Fire Department President and he gave me, I could send you this. This is a list of all the fire lanes and I counted and there was twenty-three. There, there's two that they said are accessible to get a fire truck into now. Okay, so I, like, I don't think that that's acceptable at all. I have the chief's number and the president's number. If you guys would like to reach out to them, I could also send you that. And then I'm quoting somebody from Facebook. They wrote on a Facebook status, uh, named Davidson. He says, I have personally spoken with all three commissioners on this subject and they have all publicly stated that they will protect the public accesses. So what I'm asking you guys here today is will you guys protect and restore all? Public accesses?
Yeah.
You will?
Yeah, we're working on it. Uh, we've actually been working on it for over a year. I had, uh. Can't remember again, was the name from Coons Lake called us at least a year, maybe a little over a year. So we are working on it.
Uh.
I can't promise we'll do it tomorrow, you know?
Yeah, definitely.
I say we've been on for a year and we've just now got it where we can do one.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. And I mean, like you say, it's safety for the fire department.
Yeah.
And not just Coons Lake, Bass Lake same way.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And the safety is a big concern of mine. And I mean, I love the lake, not down in it in any way, but like our park, we have the crappiest park in the entire county. We don't have much things to do. I'm sure everyone here knows about the Kramer Beach situation. You know, there's all types of public land that's, there's an attempt to take over by private landowners. And the kids going around the lake, like they should be able to swim, they should be able to fish, they should have stuff to do. They shouldn't be sent behind a phone or sent idle.
Or be told they're on private property when they're trying just to fish.
Absolutely.
I agree a hundred percent.
Okay.
And we are working on, I said, I can't promise. I can't even give you a date just because it's taking so long now.
Okay.
Well, yeah, we would absolutely.
Alright.
And if there's fire lanes already blocked, maybe I'll get hold of, of our chief over there.
Oh, absolutely.
See if we can get maybe Robbie or something to check, you know, so.
Okay, I give you guys their number if you need it now.
I got there.
Yeah, okay.
Um, real quick though, can you state your name for the record?
My name is Patrick Russell, Junior.
Okay, and do we typically get addresses?
Not usually, but I already had his phone or his name because he's on the agenda.
In the event that several people talk here, I just wanna make sure it's on the record.
Yeah, he's speaking. He sent me a copy of the fire lane.
Yeah, you wanna.
I can get it from him.
I gotta say, you can write your number down. I can tell you. Okay, anything else?
Uh, actually, I'll have you email that to me. Um, let me give you my email address.
That's great. Can we one second?
Sure. Is the, you said the fire chief, you spoke with him?
Uh, the president of the fire department.
President of the fire department. Is he here by chance? President of the fire department.
Are you talking Mark Allen, the trustee or?
Or a guy? I, I don't believe it was Marquis, the president. There's a chief and a, a president, and I spoke with the president, but the chief, I wasn't able to get a hold of.
Okay. It's pretty simple. It's mike@plymouthfoundry.com.
Okay. I'll get a send on. F O U N D R Y?
Yep.
Okay.
Would you mind if we hang on to this in case some people wanna talk and point out something until?
Yeah, I'll say it to them.
Yeah.
Alrighty, alrighty, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Alright, any other comments from the public? Uh, if you wanna put your hand up, I can call on folks individually. Sir?
I just had a question. Did I hear like this, um, you were twenty-three public access planes?
From our town.
But twenty-one of them are currently blocked?
Yeah, yeah, but now, now that's, uh, that's the north and the south side, so that's our county and our county combined.
Okay.
But combined, there is that.
Can I ask you, is Kramer Beach one of ones that's open?
Uh, I've, I've considered the lie. So, but I don't know if that's really a, a fire lane. The one next to Kramer Beach, however, is considered and it is open. Yeah.
Okay, anybody else?
Good.
Oh, sir in the back.
You say you are looking into it. Do you have any, do you know of anything in the future, uh, any way that we can know what time to look? Uh, signage or enforcement, you're going to? Uh, look or?
Starting with surveys right now.
Alright, yeah, we're starting surveys right now is what we're doing. And I would like, which, I mean, I'm only one of the three, I, I would like cables put up. Just so we can, you know, like the parking. I know there's a lot of parking trouble with Coons Lake, but. So it'll take, you know, for the weekend that they have people down or whatever, everybody parked in that lane. That's just as bad as, you know, blocking it. I would like to put cables up myself and then put plenty of signs. Our county's got a sign maker. I mean, when you get all kinds of signed up, that's my personal plan of it.
Is that a possibility to get those cables put up like that?
Yeah, I mean, we'll have to vote on it and get all the kind of money, because it's gonna cost quite a bit to. Get the survey done.
Because they keep taking the sign stuff.
Right, that's why I say, I think that's why I think cables would be better.
Really, for the county's protection, we need to get the surveys done first, so we're not actually blocking somebody's private property.
Yeah, and they can't say we took their property. Yeah, absolutely.
Cause we gotta protect their rights to some degree. I mean, that we can't put our signs on their property, even if it was by accident.
Yep.
Alright, now if we find out that private landowners have potentially taken the public access signs down in an attempt to maximize their. Yard, who's responsible for paying for putting the sign back up? Can we hold them liable at all?
I think if you catch him, we could talk to the sheriff and see if the sheriff could do something about it. That won't be us, you know what I mean? That'd go to the sheriff department or prosecutor.
It'd be separate of county, yeah.
Yeah.
I have an idea, suggestion. Um, maybe paint if it's a paved area, paint like a fire lane, kind of like the airport. Put fire, so they take the sign down, still painted on the ground.
No, there's not a pay, there's none of them are paved.
I was just gonna go.
I don't think so, but all grass.
Grass.
Just, I mean, we walked by one day and. If you didn't know, the grass has grown over it, yeah.
Right.
Whatever, I don't know.
There anything on any of the maps that show where these twenty-three locations that we can see?
I have a written up list from the fire department, and on that map, that's, uh.
Might appear if you wanna look at it, so.
Yeah, that's a old map, I wasn't able to highlight it all, but just that work, I've been busy.
You're welcome to come up and take a look while we're having the discussion, if you, if you just kinda wanna see what it looks like.
Yeah, but it's anywhere where it's not a, a box, a box, it does a lot of land, but now, anywhere.
Thanks.
You're only gonna get so-so of a picture. You've got the beach road marked on here, yeah.
I believe so.
Yeah, it's parapet, is that right?
Yeah, and then, uh, that's an older map too, so that all of the plots are even current on there, like, if you look up here, like, right here.
Yeah, I signed more of that one.
Yeah, it's the tip of canoe, but there's more houses there, so there's an older map.
Yeah.
But if you look anywhere that has, it looks like distant area going out to the.
Right, yep, yep, yep.
Yeah, those are all public access.
I'm not sure, you can kinda indicate, see in between times.
Yeah.
County line here?
Yeah, there's.
That's Anderson Drive, isn't it?
Uh.
That's Anderson Drive.
Yep. Yeah, I've only been on a lake for two years, man.
I've seen you. County line. That goes in between now, it's too probably, right?
That's definitely still.
Okay, I'll have no worries for that, but something, we don't know exactly.
Send it forward to me?
No, I, I will.
Yeah, send it to me. Uh, any more comments on the Coontes Lake easements, sir?
Yeah, is there a difference between fire lane and public access?
I believe so.
Yeah, I would say so.
I don't know what the difference will be, but I know the fire department's got them marked, they can get down. But I'm not on a fire department enough, I know it's gotta be certain out waiting for them and all that, but I couldn't tell you.
So the twenty-three fire lanes, that's correct?
Yeah, as fire lanes, public access provide, but like, together.
How many of them are fire?
I'm not sure which ones which, but when I spoke with the president of the fire department, we weren't really sure, it's not real clear. But I believe what we kinda got out of it was that the fire lanes, the firemen and emergency services take precedent. But I'm pretty sure that the public is still allowed to access if they wanted to fish or, or something. Uh, it could be cloudy, I don't know a hundred percent the legality of it, but that's kinda what me and him.
I think that needs to be clarified.
Yeah, no, no.
Which ones which and regulations.
Well, I know at one time they was all marked, uh, what was fire lane and what was public access.
Yeah.
Who's the president of the fire department? I know the chief.
Uh, I can't remember his name off, and I talked to him a couple weeks, I got his phone number, if I can give that to you.
While you're marked involved, but I'm not.
Mark's your trustee, I believe the president's probably Tony, which would be Andy's brother.
Okay.
I'm not positive that that's, it'll verify.
Yeah, I know his wife runs a Facebook page, I haven't talked to someone in regard to those stats, I didn't write it down, I don't remember them too.
Sir?
Um, when the conservancy district was created, though, didn't they have to make a specific public launch? Where that could consider the access to the lake?
No.
There's, well, there's a between houses out there that are considered the public access.
Public access.
Not for launching both, but, you know, they walk up and fish like he was talking, jump in and swim, mother.
It's like a howie.
Yeah.
So I think I'm hearing from the public is we need to identify what all of them are and what they're specifically called.
Yes.
And get them all located.
Yep.
That's a good starting point.
Right.
Yeah, if they're, if they're not a dual use, then I don't think any of the ones that are currently up are actual fire lanes. Because the one that's by Kramer Beach, it just says public access or, uh, public access, that's not part of them, but it doesn't say fire lane. And neither does the one down Tippy Canoe, and those are the only two that have proper signage that I know of, I, I could be wrong, they may know more than me. So if that's the case, then there is not one fire lane on the way. If, if they differentiate, but if they're dual purpose, then I guess you will say they're.
Sign on Tippy Canoe does say fire access.
Alright, okay, right, and there's one or one that, yeah.
Yeah, Robbie.
Well, I was just gonna suggest maybe we could get, you know, kind of work on it a little bit, can you get, huh? Right, I know he's, he's leaving. And if we hired somebody new, maybe he could stay on for a couple weeks to help on this kind of process. Uh, any other comments on Coontes Lake?
Sure. On the, on the public access, I, I know a lot of people, you know, be, to their homes have access that was described for fishing, swimming, and, and all of that. Um, also, there's an easement, I believe, from the lake on up on the public access, fifteen feet. Um, blocking with a cable, I know elderly and also kids, they come down there. Some of them come down with their parents on a golf cart, uh, if that's blocked, then it's gonna block their access that way.
Right, well, we're gonna do it, block, uh, we're just doing, so the fire department could get it now. Because the ones taking them, signing down, they're gonna be the first ones called when the fire department can't make it to their house.
Yeah, I, I know of one on Circle Drive that, uh, they pulled the weekend, this is many years ago. Put dirt in, put grass on, and told people this is my property.
Right.
And it is.
Alright. I like, I think there's a public interest here in this, that, you know, we should really probably get to the council and try to get some money budgeted. Yeah. To, to get some of this stuff moving. Yeah, I think that's something we can, yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I think, maybe your mind wanted, they could bother, the spots that are open, concentrate on those to make sure they stay open, because if those close up, there'll be no access to the lake for the fire, so at least identify those to start and then stand from there.
Yeah, it sounds like we gotta have someone to police it, Tom, and we've been up here talking a little bit, we got some ideals now.
Yeah.
Which ones are?
So we're gonna have to police it right now, by the sound of it, I mean, if they're, if they're all that closed up.
Okay, so Gene Pugh is our interim ins- inspector.
Right.
And, um, now he's working for us part-time.
Right.
But we also have, uh, Robbie up there that's code enforcement. So I'm gonna bring this up to both of them to see if they can start getting involved a little bit. Um, and in the meantime, we'll talk with, uh, council and see if we can get some money in the budget to do, start doing these surveys. And, and at least start moving in that direction. I know that the first quotes that we've gotten for the surveys was quite costly.
Right.
But we might be able to, to get it out for bid or something and get some more interest in it. Uh, any more comment on Coontes Lake? Alright, we're gonna move on on the agenda. Um, we have Amy with the Parks Department.
I, I bugged Rachel and she's coming up with me, so help me answer specific questions.
I like that, sure.
Thank you. Do you like your turn?
No.
Okay, so, um, I'm here to ask for permission to get a donation of Millings, the highway department, to use in the twenty-three kayak launch parking lot project. And I think it's thirteen triaxal loads.
So.
That what you figure?
Be three hundred and twenty-five tons.
But we don't pay nothing for that, right?
No, so, um, normally you would have to pay or reimburse the highway department for aggregates, but this, this type of aggregate was given free to us, we didn't even haul it, it just came from the state projects when they repaved three, uh, US thirty-five and State Road Eight many, many years ago.
Now, is this something that we're thinking about using highway trucks to haul?
I think that's undecided right now, am I correct?
Mm-hmm.
It, now, if they do use highway trucks to haul, they're gonna have to reimburse for equipment use and labor.
Right.
You have any idea what per truck?
Um, I'm not sure what the equipment use is, we go by the FEMA rating chart, but the labor would be like twenty-five seventy-five an hour.
Still something, if they can do.
Yeah.
Is that something that we could have bid too?
They can, well, yeah, they're.
Well, just for the hauling?
Oh, bid for the hauling.
Yeah, I don't know, what's in your bid documents?
I don't know.
They're, they're bidding out the project, um, they're just trying to make it a little cheaper with taking the Millings out of the bid documents. Um, so I don't know if that's in their scope or not.
Well, I, I'm not opposed to Rachel doing it, I just don't want a local contractor to miss out on an opportunity if, if, you know, they wanna bid it for a fair price to haul it for Rachel.
I might call the bank, you know, and get it for that, you know, out there, so people wanna bid.
Uh, we did extend the bid for the parking lot, it was supposed to end today, but it's going to the end of the week, and I know a couple more that are gonna bid.
I'm sure you guys put it in the paper and you advertise on WKVI.
Now, if we're gonna advertise for just the hauling of the Millings, should we advertise that on at least our page and the paper? Just so, you know, the.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, likely it says something that you can.
They would have to do that, that's their project.
Oh.
Because they wouldn't know the information.
They did put it on there you want, uh, bid from just hauling the mill and going from the county grounds. Right.
It's like Rachel.
Yeah, I think Amy correctly from her, but that's.
It is, it is.
And, and, and we may have to, since we're going to this additional, Rob, we may have to go out, we bid it, because I think the current bid each person who's bidding brings her own notice to it, to process.
Okay.
I think they changed, they changed it, but I don't know what it says about the, whoever gets the bid, if, I think they're supposed to haul it or arrange it.
We'll check in our board meeting.
Yeah.
And make sure what all the eyes are dotted across the.
Right.
Make sure that if we have to go out, we bid, we'll do that.
Sure. Okay.
So how? So once they get the Millings there, do you have to have someone rule it?
The guy doing the, the work.
Part of their project.
Oh, so it'll all be.
Then they'll bring the limestone in, put on top, so they have to put, that's how it's all beaten, did that, get out.
But she needs your approval tonight for the donation of three hundred and twenty-five tons of Millings.
Oh, my God. Second. You get that, Mike, when they, all those, any favor?
I, Tom, do you want us, do you want or not to put that on the website yet, until your meeting or?
Well, I, I think we, I, I can't speak for, obviously, the entire department, I, we've had our meeting and see.
And that's, that's, they run.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Probably better not, put it on the website, and we'll be talking.
I don't know how many we've actually even got yet, so.
But you got it, so.
I know we've gotten a couple, but.
Yeah.
I think somebody pulled out, but, yeah, so.
No, is there anywhere that people can buy those shirts?
They're at the beach and I'll make sure.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, we do have them. Like shirts, we have those at the beach too, and we'll have them at the luau, I hope we make it.
You don't have one of them to show off?
No. We were into the last meeting I came to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, Frank?
Talking to Rick about concrete, yep, sidewalk out in front of NX two here.
Yes, sir.
The section beyond what the new put in when they did the remodel. And he was able to get two bids. I have money in my capital running item. We, that I can spend on this, I don't have to worry about fifty-fifty program or any of that.
Okay, nice.
Yeah, we had two thousand nine hundred and sixty back then, we, I know all of them, it all the concrete business involved. And we thought not fifty-fifty like Frank's talking about, about last time. Instead of us having play for the council, so Frank said, since it's his building. It's my building, so as far as replacing that choppy end of the sidewalk there, it's all broken and.
So, alright, but it comes out of his funds?
Yeah, Jeff, I can use ten percent out of mine.
Yeah, I mean, it's well under the, well under the limit.
Yeah, because I've got like forty-nine thousand on that, so that I can use for a staple, yeah. My opinion, uh, like, even though it's a little higher, he's wanting to do all the concrete instead of changing, got it.
Is this, uh, Kingsman, are they registered with the county?
I do not, I believe so.
They are?
Yeah.
Okay.
They both. I mean, what Rick was saying was they would be able to get to it quicker.
Oh.
Kingsman.
Paying the wood?
Yeah.
So Kingsman's a little bit less and quicker.
Right.
I guess I wouldn't be afraid to give him a shot since the other one has gotten so much work recently.
What is the name of this one? I can't even read it.
Which one?
Perford is.
Perford, the, the first one.
Perford?
Yes.
Yeah.
One with proposal, Tom.
Did you meet with both contractors?
I didn't meet with any of them.
Oh, Rick did?
Rick did, okay. He wanted to just go ahead and move forward, but I'm like, we're better type of commissioners, because it's county property.
Yeah.
When I talk to him, he wanted you to start from. Whatever, I'm okay with Travis.
If he wants to use her for, uh, either way, I've got the money in there covered, but again, same thing.
I'd make the motion for Kingsman.
I'll say it.
Alright, we got a motion and a settlement.
Very good. Tell Rick, let him go and get hold of him, and like I said, I'll tell him to just give me the claim.
Okay.
Then I'm just gonna throw the eleven sixty-one, then move.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
You're up again.
I just wanna show you this, uh, wonderful note that I received on our paving equipment from some of the residents in that area. You can't have it, that's gonna go on my board.
Okay.
Are you done? I don't want anybody to steal it. This I emailed to you guys, this is just printed copy.
What?
Yeah, you can read it.
No, I'm not gonna read that.
Oh, I'm not gonna read it?
Okay. Thank you, you convinced me. Thank you for finally repaving our roads, I have been waiting over ten years for this in Monterey, residents appreciate it, and it has three parts.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, monthly reports. So many fires, I'm sure.
Well, where are you starting with, Rachel?
I'm gonna start with, um, I'm not talking, that's not in my monthly report, if you wanna talk about, we can talk about it.
Okay.
Paving operations are running smoothly, there are some changes to the twenty-twenty-five paving plan. Um, paving plans are really never set in stone. Mother Nature loves to throw obstacles in the loop. English Lake Road will be changed from the town of North Hudson into four hundred south, supposed to be one point seven five miles. We're actually shortening that to English Lake Road between four hundred south and five hundred south, just one mile. But we are adding four hundred south between one hundred west and the bridge. If you remember correctly, CCMG project last year was supposed to have four hundred south between one hundred west and Range Road. But the consultant accidentally did one of the directionals incorrectly, and we're gonna change it. So I wanna repave some of that, that's about point five miles. I'm removing nine hundred east between State Road ten and five fifty south for now. Um, over the spring season this year, the ditch bank has collapsed more than it was before, and it's gonna need some, um, fixing, I need to pull the ditch out before I repave it. That's just a bigger project than expected, so I see where I'm at at the end of the year. I'm gonna have to take the equipment out there, rebuild the ditch before paving it is even considered, because if I just go out there and pave it, it's just gonna ruin the pavement anyways. Um. I have added eight fifty south between one thousand east and the curve, about point five miles. This road has deteriorated from the freeze stall season this year. I had to also do a complete wedge on one, ten twenty-five east between Division Road and one fifty north for the same reason. I actually attached the twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five paving operation spreadsheet, um. Last problem, we've currently finished about ten point seven five miles of our plan, and have used eight thousand eight hundred and thirty tons of cold mixed asphalt. Why you guys make me so nervous, geez?
I haven't said a word.
I know. I know.
We talked a while back to for what I know is you're gonna try to.
I'm gonna. Um, yeah.
Said it had blown out.
It has, and there's a lot, been a lot of roads that have blown out, but yeah, it means it just as bad as a couple of them did. I gotta see where I have, um, what I have left material when we're done.
I just thought you'd mention it.
Um, mammoth, so in our outstanding projects, Mammoth Solar in partnership with Stark County Highway Department and Indiana Economic Development Corporation has brokered one point two million dollar infrastructure grant to support significant improvements to Stark County roads in the Mammoth area. The funds awarded to Stark County Highway Department are designated for use on the roadways impacted in part by the ongoing construction of Mammoth Solar. So about for the past week now, we've been hauling in the material that we need to make the cold mix asphalt for the first phase of the project. The first phase has to be done this year. Um, central paving will be making the mixture around the third week of August, and we will be completing the first phase during the month of September. Our plan is to have the twenty twenty-five paving operations done by September first, so that we can focus on the grant work. The first phase of the project will include eight hundred south between two hundred east and seven hundred east, and then four hundred east between State Road ten and nine hundred south. And attached a spreadsheet to show all what roads are in that particular area and are included in the grant. Work one work experience program. Over the summer, we've had two individuals who have been working for our department through the work one work experience program. Work one pays for their salary, workmates compensation, and all of the benefits. This does not cost the county any money to take on these individuals. They're there to gain workplace experience and have been going out with different crews throughout their six weeks period. Last week, I hired one. He's featured on the front page. Mister Sebastian. He's been doing great. He got his permit, the CLB permit, and he's actually a screw man on paper paving crew. So he works the screed on the back of the paper. Fuel system, gate system. On Saturday, July twenty-sixth, we had a decent storm that had a lot of lightning. Our fuel system and gate system were both hit by lightning. The motherboards of both systems were damaged. The fuel system was repaired that following Monday, but we're still waiting for the motherboard for the gate system. The repairs to the fuel system was over three thousand, and I believe it's gonna be around three thousand for the gate system.
And you took a carat block on.
Ten thousand dollar deductible. Yes. Do you wanna talk about, um, your stuff before I go into really bad news?
I don't know. That's a good way to lead any conversation. Continue.
Dying up here. I got a lot of light.
You gotta get a fan or something.
Okay, I've tried to make this very simple, um, page by page. So we received our two internationals, the tandem internationals that were ordered about six years ago. Maybe five years ago. Um, this email is to me from Republic, who's who we have the leasing through, and she says that our escrow is short thirty-two thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty cents.
How can that be?
We're gonna. We're gonna go through all that.
Good, sorry.
So I email Linco and Tom, because Linco's where we got the body from, and Tom is where they got the chassis from. Um. Lin Linco pointed out that since they were ordered in twenty twenty-two, there was an increase per chassis of ten thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars. So that's a lot of it, and then.
I thought we paid that.
And he said that their late Linco's labor rate has changed over the years, and some of the parts that they used have increased over the years. So then I went to Tom and still, uh, Linco. And he, in the email, he stated to Daryl many years ago, I think it was about two thousand twenty-three, that, um, did speak to Dan about the increase. And he signed for the increase. So then I had the signed document for the increase that was signed by the previous superintendent in July thirty-first, twenty-fourth.
The more.
Correct. So then we go to um, just emailing Tom to try to get a signed contract, because nobody has a contract either for all this. And he says that he doesn't have the information. Um, the deal was ran through Linco and that the original order per chassis was one hundred and eleven thousand six one six, with the delivery price from COVID to after COVID, it was one twenty-one, one ten. So I have the two internationals, we're short thirty-two thousand four twenty-eight. I have the money to pay for it. I just gotta go with council.
You're sure on the way. I know we brought up one time that, um, that the pricing of stuff was more, but I thought the county paid for that.
I don't, I just don't recall that. And I don't know, that could have been on, because we had the Western Stars too, remember? We had the Western Stars.
Um, that's only.
Internationals of the very first trucks that were. I don't know. I wasn't a part of the.
I wasn't neither.
From when, from the, just the chain that I've researched, the highway was notified that of the increase, and they signed off on the increase per chassis, and the other increase was labor and parts through and for the body.
So this is all signed off on this one.
The chassis, yes.
This is why we need a purchase order system. Cause it could have had this documented with the purchase order, and then it was paid and party to track.
Right.
But this was filed. You found this.
I did not find this at the Highway Department. We had to go through Wears, the Tom, and then Linco, Daryl, to get all the records. I I don't have anything with the Highway Department on this.
So do we have any records anywhere of this document other than?
The internationals, no.
Well, now the commissioner's saying.
No.
That's what I say right here.
That's a mess.
Yeah. From six here.
But, and just to clarify, there was no documentation anywhere in the annex building of anything like this, and nothing at the highway.
It would have been, I mean, cause I was auditor at this time, we would have put it probably in, um, the meeting minutes at some point. Or if he brought it to Board of Commissioners, anything that he brought to the Board of Commissioners, but this particular document where the increase, this wasn't brought to the. He signed off on it himself.
And that's what I'm asking. That's why.
No, this, this particular document was not.
It's not filed any map. And you're.
And now. Have you checked, Mike Lane is not enough there?
No, um, not on this. The, the very original purchase, like the one we purchased on in twenty twenty, and we originally signed off on that lease and stuff that we have record of, but not the increase.
And your initial question was you thought we already paid that. Is there any way we can go back through claims?
No, so we wanna already paid it because we just, so it was in a lease. So what we've been doing for this five years, if we've been paying the bank just to hold our money, and then we were just built, cause we just got these trucks, so we were just built for the chassis and the body two weeks ago. So we had not paid anything at all toward these trucks at all.
So not the extra money?
No.
Don't was.
No. So the bank just paid out our balance of what we had in our escrow to Linco.
Really want the bank to keep track of it.
No, it wasn't up to the bank to keep track of it. No, we went to the bank and said, hey, we need this lease amount and.
I remember all that. I mean, we pay a month.
No, it wasn't up to the bank to say, you know, hey, you guys have an increase. You need to hear it out.
Typically, when you swore would be. I don't know which one. I mean, it might, it could have been another, but I remember Western cards. Or it being brought up at the meeting that we'll pick.
Typically, when you order a piece of machinery that's got a long lead time, when you place that order, you're locked in the price unless you make changes.
Yeah.
And until seeing this document that's signed by the previous superintendent, my argument would have been, we're not paying for increases, cause we should have been locked in it.
Right.
But if there was some sort of obligation made by a county employee, that makes it tougher.
What?
Because the, our supplier was counting on the county to fulfill that.
I remember a guy at the meeting, he was on Zoom that night, when he tells about the increase.
Daryl.
There.
Well, I don't know if it's.
What am I here?
That was on the.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, and he did. I mean, he did explain that, that some things, like the link of stuff, some labor and some parts. Um.
Dan has.
They were able to lock in some of the parts, not all of them.
It's still.
Explained in this.
Because it's the contractor.
Labor rate had changed.
They took that as.
Two years.
So we paid this thirty-two, the truck paid off or was still?
Well, I'm still paying lease on them.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, no, they're not paid off. I got, I got two and a half years left on the internationals and like four years left on the Western Stars.
Well, you were talking to her, but like Justin said, we're kind of, we can't fire the guy twice, but he was signing on behalf of the county.
Yeah.
And our supplier is taking that as.
Right. Maybe about, about got paid and then kind of stuck.
And honestly, I mean, this is case in point as to why it's good to bring things up in meetings and get signatures.
Right.
You know, even I know some, sometimes things happen quickly and we have to make quick decisions, but the more documentation there is two years down the road, the better it is. Is this, is kind of a bummer for the county.
Yeah.
But I, I feel like we're obligated to pay it.
Right. I say I do know we have brought up at one meeting, but I thought, I don't brought up, we owe their money, but each truck was paid it ten thousand dollars a piece. I thought we saved, yeah, within conditions fifteen per per truck. Yeah, I'm like you. I mean, we're obligated. It showed it. We agreed on that us, but.
And and you're sure you, have you checked claims to make sure it wasn't paid for any other reason?
It wouldn't have been paid, so. Linco just finished the truck, so even if we gave them money, there was not, no invoice to put it toward.
Okay, and that's what I'm clarifying.
Yeah.
That's what I was gonna ask. Could you go back or through the bank statement and see if the check or?
It was not paid.
Okay.
For sure.
Once you go with, along the council approved.
So Donnie's making a motion to approve the extra expense with council approval, and I will second that.
Oh, yeah.
I know. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I don't, I don't wanna be offended, you know, there's two of us up here.
Alright.
Well, if you have a fan.
Rachel, I thought you said you had the money to pay it.
I do have the money to pay it, but the, um, Highway Department has a ten thousand dollar cap, so I can't, I can't go over ten thousand dollars.
Right, right. Right, I understand that, but why would she have to have council approval if she's already got it in her budget?
Because the council has me capped at ten thousand dollars.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Just wanted to make sure.
You wanna do what?
I'd say you still got to let her.
Well.
He brought about that. Okay, so you wanna recap what's going on with this new report from Total Road?
So, you know, I came out, you know, consulting, that's who I use for my projects now. Um. They, I met him out there on the road, um, with my foreman, and they inspected the whole roadway. We walked, um, a good length of the roadway too. So there. Well, what they said, a loss of aggregate can occur when dirty, dirty stone is placed, when placement occurs in cool or cold temperatures, and when precipitation occurs before, during, or directly after placement. Since the chip seal was completed during September, October of twenty twenty-four, temperatures and precipitation likely played a role in the bleeding and the flushed pavement. They recommend placing a single course chip seal or placing a sandwich seal over the deficient pavement. A sandwich seal would consist of spreading aggregates on the surface before the application of a single course chip seal. Um, a repair plan is recommended, of course, from contractor for approval by the county prior to starting the work. So I know in the, well, the thing that we had with central paving and asphalt materials, we had talked about putting twelves down, then rolling the twelves with a, a retired roller. I was gonna do it last Friday, but it was way too cold. Gotta be a high eighties, low nineties for it to really be effective. Um. So what would you like to do?
Well, the company's still offering with stone, and I think we should attempt to do that, cause that's their sort of.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it's unfortunate what's going on with this road, and the section between State Road twenty-three and a thousand east, um, probably should have never been chipped sealed before the road was repaired. That's the section that I think you guys got all the calls on last year. Um, and I, I do think, uh, along with this report, if if the stone helps in any way, uh, that section between twenty-three and a thousand should probably still be on the shortlist for doing more work to the road. Uh, but I think the stone may help, and maybe Rachel has a different opinion.
Yeah. I think we should do the stone, see what it does, and then if anything, um, pave the section between twenty-three and a thousand. Total Road is a lot of traffic. The only thing that I'd be worried about with using cold mixed asphalt is the, um, like the garbage truck traffic.
Then we'll move forward with what we're planning with the.
Yeah.
And you're gonna roll that stone.
Yeah, on the next hot, I mean, I'm, we're ready to go. I'm ready to do it. I just need to wait for another hot day.
Did you get the stone?
No, we're gonna, that day, I'm gonna send two trucks down there and pick it up and then go straight to the road.
Um, and real quick, I know you're getting ready to do more cold mix out there. How's the containment plan for this next batch?
So we have a good sized burn around, uh, the pile right now. Uh, it's been holding steady. That's what we did last year. Never broke. The rea, the reason it broke this time is because when they were making the pavement, they were going, driving through the burn, so the burn was being destroyed. This next time, that burn is not gonna be destroyed. And then I also have, um, basically a secondary burn around a, a lot of the yard too.
Okay.
Um, that's made up with concrete mix and sand.
How's the cleanup project going from the, when it rained when they were making it last time?
Pretty good. We got the, all of the front area is dug out and the stuff is disposed of. Um, have black dirt put down, grass seed started, and then, um, where we, we fixed our part of the yard where, um, the emulsion came over a little bit, um. And I mean, since the burn's been holding, it hasn't been, you know, coming out anymore.
Great.
I didn't hear where you said you had the containing around.
Um. Hook pile, yeah.
Oh, pile.
So it's a firm containment, I guess you would call it, around the poke pile itself, and then I have a second firm around more of the yard in case that one were break.
Vote. Hmm? They vote? Yeah, yeah.
You got anything else, Tom? I'm good. Thanks, Rachel.
I'll back up. It's fine. Uh, Patty?
So, Vivian, Mike, and Justin, my name. Thank you. Oops, sorry. Thank you. Okay, my name is Patty Fitzpatrick, and I am the designated spokesperson for the Coons Island residents and, uh, other neighbors that are on Tippecanoo near Coons Island. And I am here today, uh, requesting that the, um, commissioners provide some clarity on the legal ownership of Coons Island Road and the bridge, East Island Road specifically. Um, we are asking the commissioners to formally adopt East Island Road, including the bridge, as a county road. And we are also asking the commissioners to appeal to the county council. And we are also asking the commissioners to appeal to the county council on our behalf. To add the island bridge to the Stark County Bridge Inventory. To get approval for funding to inspect, repair, maintain, possibly replace. The bridge. Well, we'll get to that. Um, and to provide customary road maintenance, um I have a little bit of history in here, I'll. Let you read that, I won't go into that. But there is a compelling piece of information that I would like to share with you that we did not previously know about. Which is, if you look at your um handouts here. You will see the Indiana Department of Transportation Road Inventory map. That clearly shows um Tippecanoo and a portion of Island Road highlighted in orange. And Rachel, previously, we met with her. She confirmed that anything highlighted in orange on that map is a county road. And should be maintained by the county. This road and bridge has not been maintained by anyone, um it is sixty nine years old. To our knowledge, it has never been inspected or repaired. We know.
Let me stop you there. You referenced Rachel, you spoke with a Rachel.
Rachel. They did not plow it, we hired private individuals um to plow it with a pickup truck. Snow plow on the front. So let me stop for a moment.
You wanna hear my opinion?
Yeah, absolutely.
I honestly don't think, I mean, you know the NDOT inventory. There's things that we find on there all the time that we've been maintaining, we're not getting paid for it, that we haven't been maintaining and we should be getting, you know, vice versa. So this inventory has, you know, a hundred years in the making, mistakes here and there. So as we find the mistakes, we correct them. I honestly think that it was supposed to stop right here. I really don't think that it was supposed to be in the inventory anyways. I don't think that this bridge was supposed to be in the inventory, because if it was, it would have had a bridge number, it would have been inspected every four years since then. But it is, I mean, it clearly is on the inventory. So it's kind of up to you guys whether or not you want to leave it on the inventory, remove it from the inventory. This is, I mean, you're talking about dollars a year, it's nothing. No offense to anybody with the, about the bridge or this road or anything, it's just, it's, it's just messed up, it's, this is how it is.
So we're all these years that we've got, collecting no taxes off of it.
We have not collected any taxes off that. This section right here, cause they're asking, I think possibly, you guys wanna add this section?
No, no.
I'm gonna keep the bridge.
Like the county to take responsibility for the bridge. And what, that part that's highlighted, we want the county to maintain.
Yeah.
The bridge in the road.
On the island there, you're talking?
No, just right here.
Sir?
Alright, so um this kind of got crossed the line by me and some of the people, I wound up to fish on the bridge. And there was a big confusion whether it was public or private, and I did see it on the Southern County uh Highway Inventory List. So a lot of it's public, uh I mean, some words were exchanged, we're not getting into any of that, right? But what I can hear is, is, is if we're going up Island Drive. We, we shouldn't do half public, half private, either the entirety of Island Drive should be a county road, or it should not be. That half of the road is public and half of it is private, I don't. Understand, I don't agree with that, you know, either it's, it's public or it's private, there shouldn't be a cutoff. On the bridge and then island's private, you know, it should be for public use or it should not.
Parents, and now being picking our individual on. Individual deeds show that they own from one side of the island to the other side. That's all it shows. That's why they're, they are coming to you now to say, okay, we don't own the bridge, because we own the island. The island itself is private, because it's been deeded. As such, through all sales, so. I, I understand his concern too, but this is not the issue that we're coming to you now, we're coming to you with the.
There's no documents that show whether the bridge is private or pub- public, not even on their deed. It, it doesn't say that the bridge is private or public, so as it stands right now, at this very moment, we are getting paid for that bridge. We're getting paid for that section of roadway for the bridge.
We are collecting money on.
For that little tiny roadway of the bridge, but the bridge isn't in, in our inventory, it is not an unofficial bridge for Stark County Government. So that's why I said, I believe this is a. Error on NDOT's part of making that go all the way down, it probably should have stopped right here by the deed. That's what I believe. But it's up to you whether or not we're gonna remove it and stop it by the deed. Or you're, we're gonna have to put forth funding to build a new bridge, put it in our inventory. I mean, the building of the bridge is gonna be all at county costs.
Right.
The inspection part of it will get repaid eighty percent for the inspection part once every four years.
May not be. A new bridge is needed.
Well, I mean, that's just something that they have to look at.
It's sixty nine years, that's a fact. It is.
I mean, inevitably, at some point in the future, we'll do, but my question is, that. This piece of land up here, uh. This little piece of land up here where the docks are. Uh, on that side, I'm, I'm pretty sure that's public, right, like can't you put a public dock there? That, that's deeded out. I could have sworn I seen that that was an easement. I mean, I could be wrong.
There is a electrical uh utility easement that runs along this portion of the private road. So there are NIPS go foam lines and sewer back there.
So now that, like the north side, hypothetical, I'm not sure which side that is, but like the north side of the bridge, that piece of land.
Can I, can I continue with?
Absolutely, and, and folks, if we can hold any more public comment until it's done, and then we'll take some public comment.
Okay. So. The first photo is the I-DOT Road Inventory, the second one is the Stark County GIS. So on the Stark County GIS, it clearly shows that. The portion we refer to as our driveways, that portion is marked private, but the other portion that we were just talking about. Is not marked private. And when you look at the plat drawing for. The island and the bridge and the road. The bridge is not marked private. The only indication is in the dedication, it talks about. For the use of uh the lap owners. Um, and it's referring to, uh in my opinion, this is designating a public right of way. For the residents on the island to use the private road coming off the bridge. It doesn't necessarily make the bridge private.
So who's paying to maintain? This?
The residents that live there, we divide it, we get gravel, we get gravel.
And this is like a community pitch in type situation. Okay, so there's not set in stone, you guys just work together and, and. Okay, I just wanted to clarify how it was being.
And we pay for snow plowing and gravel.
Okay.
Stuff like that.
And you're currently paying to plow the bridge?
Currently, yes.
And again, that's a community, correct, okay.
Okay, so here are a few photos of the bridge itself. It's forty feet long by twelve feet wide. It definitely has this uh. Again, it has the uh NIPS go uh exposed. Gas pipeline there. Big concern, given the age of the bridge and the structure of the bridge, as you will see in the photos. It is deteriorating, so you know, if this bridge does collapse with this gas line on here. You know, a potential explosion is going to happen. Which is very concerning. There's also definite uh concerns about the ability for large vehicles, including the NIPS go truck. The large NIPS go truck will not come over the bridge. We had a recent call, one of the residents needed them to come out, they came out in their big truck. They turned around, they didn't go across the bridge, they had to wait for a smaller vehicle. We can't, uh one of the residents needs a new well drilled. The well company, she's called multiple, none of them will come over the bridge. Um, you know, we can't move furniture, things like that in and out. Um, it's becoming really problematic, given the age and the condition. Uh, the wet well walls, excuse me, those are falling down, as you can see on the sides. Um. It's, it's a real concern, uh we know there is multiple. Sources of funding available. Um, through various sources. Including this uh grant that the governor approved earlier in the year. Now, it's our understanding that there is also um excise tax on gasoline. Uh, portion of income tax, other funds that are made available through state and local sources. And, you know, we have reason to believe that the county has money. In, in um escrow or earmarked for road improvements that we would like to ask for approval for funding. Um, you know, the residents on the, on the island have been paying higher lakefront property taxes. Since the very first house was built. So you know, we definitely contributed our portion. Um.
What's this?
So that was a part of the two million dollar uh matching grant that the governor approved uh in March. There's a page ahead of that that, at the back of there. Um.
So do you live on?
I do, I, I live in the roundhouse.
Okay, and we have, uh what, six houses here, five?
There's six lots, five homes.
Five homes.
This is a designated beach area. Uh, that the residents share.
And I'm understanding, or I'm getting from what you're saying is. All the residents of the island would like to see that bridge be part of. The county's responsibility.
So it's not just the island residents, so if people that are here for, for this discussion can all raise their hands, please. So there's a lot of interesting, interested parties, some of them live over here on Tippecanoo, but they come over. The bridge and we all gather here, it's like a social gathering area that we share. It's part of being that area.
Now, the county takes it over, Justin, would that make it public, right? I mean, anybody can stand on that bridge and bitch.
Which they do now.
Okay, well, I'm just saying.
They do now. Oh, there were, some, and we took them down. Rachel came, she sent somebody else, and they took them down after. Patrick Russell raised the issue.
So, but it's still private now on the other side of?
Correct.
Okay.
So from where this ends over, that's all. So, um, you know, uh, take your time, think about it. We would, you know, greatly appreciate serious consideration. We really want your support to go to the council and ask for approval of the funding.
Myself, I mean, instead of making the decision tonight, I'm nothing against it, you know what I mean, but I would like to pay, but just because this adult just. Uh, we will look into it.
Um, before I take uh your motion for table, would you mind if I get any input?
And, yeah.
Anybody from the public wanna also weigh in on this?
Sure, I think there's a, like a discrepancy, just because of how it is on the GIS, it's, it's not two separate roads, it's all one. Road, so and, and I get the island and stuff, they're, they're supposed to taxpayers are gonna. Pay to maintain everything, shouldn't we be able to inherit the entirety of the roads, not just a little section that they wanna make thing. That by resident wants to make thing.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Be approaching on their properties, cause there is no, it's a dead end, so you have to pull into their.
So our, our property deed says that we own from water to water. And I'm all the way at the end, so we have three sides water. Um.
That's what happened for all of them. So, I, I guess my question would be. Let's say a, a neighbor moved in that didn't like you.
I, I have extra, do you want one more? Oh, I gave Rachel that one that you can have it. Do you need more, I have more.
Any other public comment in regards to the bridge? Thoughts? Well, your motion stands?
So will someone contacting or?
We've gotta do some investigating here.
So my contact information is here.
I think when we get back on the agenda or whatever, when you're on.
Okay.
That way you guys all know.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we able to go on that bridge in the meantime then?
Yeah, well, my understanding is it's a public bridge up until the island. Right, now Justin's gotta leave if he wants to run Land Swab.
Well, yeah, I'm covered or he can have this guy.
No, I think we're good on, on the bridge.
Yep, yep, so listen, I brought it up a while back. And the development would like to take this. Partial give it to the county and then trade us that much. I know when I brought up before, you said what they like to sell, and they'd rather. Bungle it together and trade.
Okay.
Equal up. Just to make this more square, better for the county and better for them.
Is that something that we can do?
Since they're, since they're a nonprofit. Since they're a nonprofit. Much like personal property, you should be able to do that without having to go through the. Normal process like you. Thing like that. Been a while since I thought about it. I guess I don't see why that would be an issue, if I had to do it by resolu- um, have to do it by resolution.
Okay.
Question, is that the property in front of um Norton?
It's part of that.
Part of that? So we're trying to combine it, or what are we doing with it?
There are one acre that they've developed, or I don't know what, one and a half acres, up in the far corner. And then they got two, one and a half, two down here, don't quote me on the acres.
Right.
And they wanna combine. The county owns everything else. So instead of it being separated, they wanna join it, and then the county have all one area and.
So it's our property that the county owns, is it being farmed right now?
Yep.
Are we collecting money on that?
I have no idea.
Well, that's something that we brought up at the last meeting, and I did just get all the parcel numbers to start looking into that.
Okay. I had some. Electrical company uh call me and inquire about that, and I said, the commissioner's on it, they own that property. And then it.
All of it, like two or three, whatever that.
Right.
Right.
And um they asked about it, and then someone, someone, someone from the public acts, is someone farming it? I said, I'm not sure, is there crops out there? They said, yeah, they said, well, are we collecting anything from? I said, I'm not sure.
Yeah, and that is something that I've started working on, and I just got all the information from Michaeline at the end of last week. Uh, but I do think that. Farmland. Uh, that's owned by the commissioners. Probably should go out to bid. Uh, if we're gonna let it be farmed. So that's something we're working on, it just hasn't been handled that way in the past, I think a lot of this is just grandfathered over the years and just never got cleaned up.
I think it needs to keep farming until it builds up.
But it should probably go to bid, or the farm, local farmers can bid on it.
Right.
Be fair to everybody.
Absolutely.
So. Correct. Anything else?
No, well, what do you decide? Would you do that?
I'm not opposed to it, but I would like to look at it a little bit more as far as the details of it, and I can pull it up on GS, GIS tomorrow.
Could you do that, maybe give me an answer, so I can take back to the next meeting?
Sure. Second, yeah, all those in favor? Why you wanna pick up?
I have to.
Yep. All right, you wanna do vendor claims?
Sure.
All right, we have vendor claims, uh, on the total of three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-six cents. Okay, we have payroll, uh, in total of three hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-one cents. Second. All right, we have the minutes from the seven twenty-one, twenty-five meeting.
Michael and Kate talked us about that, did we change that in the minute?
Yes.
Okay, we got a motion, and I will second. All those in favor?
He sent you a revised copy of the minutes.
Yeah, I think we did get it. Uh, you know, that was one other thing that I wanted to bring up, though, is I think you're possibly submitting the minutes. To WKVI before approval.
Right. But they, they know it's tentative, they know it's not approved yet, cause it's not signed.
But I wonder if we should even make that public until. Until we sign it.
Right, unless they're here to take it home.
Right.
Yeah.
Is it? I don't know how it's historically been done.
It's all, well, I did it that way. Way back even, so I mean, it's up to you guys. But they, um, they see it all on YouTube anyway.
Right. Well, do you wanna wait till we submit it until it's signed?
Yeah.
Was that a motion?
Yep.
Second. All those in favor? Okay, um. What, did somebody say something?
Yeah, I was just. It's on YouTube and it's made public.
But it's not us.
Kind of makes it a not worked situation.
And that's what happened now. Cause stuff, it was said and just not wrote right, is all it was, but it takes just one person to. You know, take that and run with it, well, then that makes it look, well, you, you not approved them, so. That's what it boiled down.
You need a maybe a disclosure on the YouTube thing that this is. This, this is the recording, but it has not yet been approved.
It has to do with the notes that are taken, so Michaeline does a nice job taking notes, but sometimes there's things that are. Kind of misconstrued a little bit, or somebody said it and she wrote down that somebody else said it, so.
Difference between the minutes and the actual recording of the.
Correct.
He sent the memes out, the minutes out, everyone read, there's any thing that he was trying to let her know, subtracts, and not again. Then we all go through.
The key.
Oh, for Amber. For Amber. Yeah, I'm.
Get someone.
Okay, should we make a motion, you suppose?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, give her the key.
Okay, Amber, yep, second.
You guys mind if I grab that map?
Absolutely, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do I take a picture of it or anything either?
No, I'm good.
Yeah, I think we're.
Thank you, I appreciate you guys. For doing it.
Thanks for you in both.
Appreciate your work on that, you did, you did a good job pres- presenting it. Okay, uh, one more thing on the plan commission. So we've hired Amber full time. We've been keeping, um, well, up to this point, Robbie's been paid full time because there was. A position and we needed the extra work. But she could only work full time for a period of time before we have to offer benefits, and we're, we're really at that time now. So because there's. Over the next four months, there could be some changes in how many full-time positions there are. Nothing's been posted, because we don't know what the budget's gonna be. The only solution I can see right now is. Uh, Robbie has to go back to part-time for the code enforcement. Otherwise, we're gonna run over. The allotted time that she can work that many hours. Without offering benefits.
Well, I thought was a change yet for. New people and she would be pulled up.
Until January first. Because of how the budget works. It's kind of a rock and a hard place.
Maybe for what all she's done for us.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's a tough position.
Right.
But we're at the deadline, I've talked to Suzanne up in, in, uh. The auditor's office, and we're just, we're starting to get very close to that deadline as to how much she can work up to this point. So my thought is, she's, at least until the budget's approved in the first of the year. I think she has to go back to her hours that were kind of capped as the part-time position.
No, I mean, that's what we gotta do, we gotta do, but I think we need to talk.
You know, and I can talk to her tomorrow, you're welcome to as well. But I, I mean, I've talked.
Cause I mean, her, it's not gonna look fair, you know what I mean, for what she's done.
Yeah, it's. It's not a good way, either direction you go here, but I've talked to Suzanne a couple of times about it, and we're just, we're starting to. Encroach on how long we could let that go.
Could it be possible for her to go back to part-time for a period of time and then go back to temporary full time?
I get kind of what Mike was saying. We got, we can't leave her full time now.
Right, 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 but what I'm saying is, if she goes back to. Temporary part-time or back to part-time for, say, a month or two. Or is it possible then to bring her back to full-time temporary status?
Yeah, I think that'd be good, I just, I hate it for her because she stepped up for us so much.
Right.
Uh, to me, it just ain't fair, I, I like that idea, I mean, we could check into.
Well, and really, the plan commission should probably make that decision as far as her job goes, but they don't mean for two weeks.
Right.
So that's why I'm bringing it up to you and I, because I think we gotta make that decision quicker than two weeks, cause I think we're, we're really close to. How long we were allowed to go here. And since you and I oversee and Charlie oversee the plan commission, I think we would have the authority to make the decision.
Alright. I would just like to really talk to her before making this. But I know where I'm eating from now, two weeks later.
I think we should.
So somebody gotta make a motion on? Me being as a, and asked her to step up and. So there wasn't a motion made for her to have to work full time.
Well, but we approved it.
You approved it, but again, like motion was made or anything like that, so now you go back, you can talk to her without having to make a motion here, something. Creep.
Nice, Justin was still here.
Exactly.
Clarify that. Say that again?
So maybe she wants to go pass her time.
Well, check with Suzanne, um, first thing in the morning, but I. She indicated to me earlier today that we were, were maxed out on time.
But is it possible to do like turn to sit?
Yeah.
If something like that.
I think we.
I just think it'd be more fair to.
Yeah.
The way she stepped up.
But in the meantime, I guess, um, I'll make a motion that I'll. You or I can talk to her and she'll have to go back down to part-time hours, basically effective immediately until we can get this cleared up. So that's the motion I'll put out there. Okay, I've got a motion in a second, that Robbie will have to go to part-time until we can clarify, um, any further hours that she can work.
If I talk to her tomorrow, I mean, tomorrow, if they all, I have two meetings.
I can give her a call in the morning.
Okay.
And then if you wanna talk over again.
Yeah, we'll talk to her.
I just don't want the county to get in trouble for not offering benefits if we get to a certain point, so.
And that's what I say out of mind, but it gives, you know, for what she did for us, I just think it's fair.
Okay, you got anything else?
I do. You guys got this letter a while back, and I sent you a, um. It through email, but you guys have never said anything to me about it, there's, um. Harry Yoder sent us a letter wanting to purchase. Uh, some property at the industrial park.
Didn't think we'd interest.
Okay, well, you just have never said anything to me about it.
I thought we did, maybe now.
I had it in my folder for.
Kind of talked about it briefly and said. Well, do we wanna put this on the next agenda when Charlie's here?
That's fine.
And then.
Right.
We can vote on it to make it official. Okay, anything else from the public?
Tomorrow is the second anniversary of Mike's birthday. We're gonna have a community, uh, candlelit vigil at, at dusk. If anyone wants to attend.
Where's that at?
It's gonna be, we have a little memorial pad that we built for Mike.
Okay.
And any other county employee that did. Emergency services. I right now in the process of giving donations to have a memorial put up.
Second anniversary of who's death?
Mike's death. And it's gonna be a medic three, uh, you're gonna have a. EMS private, I have one private service for five, seven. Then dusk will open up to the community who wants to come.
You're saying dusk, Jim, about what time?
About eight o'clock, eight o'clock, eight o'clock.
Okay.
And that's where?
Medic three's base docks. I did look into those properties, similar properties down. The only thing you can come up with right now is the industrial park.
Yeah, but it's on the wrong side of the tracks, all that bad there.
But we got the bridge. You go over. But it's still kind of too far away from Goose Lake. Uh, some others might be coming available to you guys.
Okay.
Yeah, just keep your ears open if you want.
I have FBI and Clary building coming in. Give a rough ass to know what it would cost.
Absolutely, and I appreciate you keep moving this thing forward, cause I do think it's gonna probably take a couple of years before it's all said and done, but if we don't start. It's never gonna happen.
Start somewhere.
Yep.
And we might be able to find a couple of locals that will give you a bid too, Jim, on that bigger project.
Yeah, I, there's a couple others I wanna, but I wanna see what the poll board was gonna cost.
Which bridge are you talking about?
The overpass.
Thirty-five.
Oh, yeah, no, we're gonna do that.
It's too far away, I said. I mean, it's like.
I thought we was building a new bridge I didn't know about. We got hidden money somewhere.
Okay, uh, anybody else from the public?
I was gonna ask, since you brought up the PO system. Bible does offer it, Andy's talking about it, you'd like me to get a price, it is an add-on to the software we have now. I can get that for you.
I guess I'd like to see a number on it, to, to create a PO system in our current.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Beginning of the year.
Kelly did a hell of a PO system for me. Why can't she do it?
I guess I'm for that. I know, Ma does offer it, and I can have Andy, I'll see Andy tomorrow at conference, so I can talk to him.
There's a couple bids if you would.
Well, it would only. While we're talking about the treasurer's office, how is the reconciling going with Crow?
I talked to them on Monday, they have made it through, uh, May. The one where it was stuck. They made it through there, they went back to April to make sure nothing was missed. And he said June, July, August, September, all of them should be good, May is just, it's tax time month. So it'd take a while, a while to get through it, I do talk to them every other Monday, ten AM, we have a team meet.
Great, so progress.
It is moving forward.
The year moving.
May of what year?
May of twenty-three. Where it stopped.
So we got a little ways to go.
Little ways. But they are moving forward.
Good. All right, anything else? Yes.
And will they figure that down, Kelly, that I'll go over the twelve thousand dollars at some point? No, oh, Monday when I, Monday, not today, but next Monday, I will ask them or rep.
Yeah.
I mean, they did wanna wait for after tax season, after settlement.
Right.
Then start diving in, so I will ask them.
Cause our quote really wasn't time based.
Fifty hours.
Fifty hours, okay, and have they used up a lot of that so far?
I think so.
Okay.
I will make sure.
Okay.
Cause there's been a lot of back and forth with loud, the bank, them. So.
Right. Sir?
Going back to that bridge. In the event that the county does take it over, and let's assume that the bridge has to be redone. What do you envision to, as a detour route for those?
I want, maybe one. Brain.
I mean, it could be what, bridge could take six months.
Oh, yeah, easy.
That really could be quite an undertaking, really, that project.
Build a bridge next to the bridge, the new bridge next to the old bridge?
Well, that would be beyond us.
Yeah.
I don't think so, I think it was inflammation. All right.
So moved.
All right, second. Yeah, I think someone did mention.
You got enough, Brad? Do you have enough?
Enough what? Well, I have two five right now.
Anything else?
Oh, now all these agendas, going in the garbage.
If I can get rid of that.
Oh, she took.
I wanted to expire, you know?
Yeah, I know, that's me too, okay.
Yeah.
It sounds like he talked to you about it.
Yeah, yeah, and then there are a couple of.